I'll call the meeting to order.
Hilliard?
Here.
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 Do you join me in the fight, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, tonight. There is no public hearings, presentations, or special reports. But if anyone from the public would like to make a comment, I surely can. Yep. Just introduce yourself again, if you would, Will.
Good evening, Mayor Kaufman, Village Trustees and Village Staff members. As I'm sure most are aware at this point, my name is Will Frost. I am a project developer with East Point Energy, responsible for the application for the Potter's Energy Center. I'm here this evening for three main purposes. First and foremost, to thank the Village Trustees for your time to review our application and to review the transcript from the public hearing in Lake January, as well as to thank the Village staff for all of the support you have offered as we've discussed this project and in pulling together our application for the special use permit. Second, I am here to acknowledge our submission of additional materials to the Village and to the Trustees since the public hearing, which include answers to questions that were left open-ended at the end of the hearing, and our comments and thoughts on the permit conditions that were presented. I'm happy to provide any further clarity on those items and answer any questions that may have arisen since I was able to submit those materials. And finally, I'm here to address what I perceive to be one of the largest outstanding items for the Village relating to this project, which is the certainty around the tax revenue that the project will provide to the Village of Morton. This topic has not been broached for two reasons, particularly our confidence in the passing of state legislation regarding the taxation of these energy storage systems prior to its, to the Potter's Energy Center commercial operation date come 2026 is our current expectation, as well as the abundance of attention that was given to the safety aspects of the system for our application. It was not out of a lack of willingness to provide the certainty around this revenue to the Village of Morton. We are modeling a meaningful amount of property taxes for this project, and we would be very interested in working with the Village to provide certainty in those revenues. And to do so, we have proposed an additional condition to the permit if the Board decides to vote on this issue tonight, and the condition reads as follows: "The owner of the system shall pay the Village of Morton an annual payment in lieu of taxes in an amount correlated to the system's nameplate capacity, which amount shall be agreed upon by the developer in the Village of Morton no later than three months following the approval of developer's permit application." If the Board deems it necessary for a number to be included in this condition and decides to potentially table a vote this evening, we would utilize the additional time to create a proposal for said payment in lieu of taxes that we can discuss in more detail with Village staff and Village officials. So again, thank you all for the time over the last month, and even more so for a number of you. I really appreciate all the support that we've seen from the Village of Morton in this application. It's been very refreshing working with the Village of Morton. So thank you all for the time, and I'll be around for any questions that may come up throughout the night.
All right. Thank you, Will. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees. Leanne Brown with the Morton Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council. First, I'd like to just say thank you to many of our businesses in the community. We recently connected with our Chamber Annual Meetup last Thursday out at American Rental Creator Scene, had about 200 people gathered. The significance of the event is to showcase several people for some very special awards, and then, of course, release our 2023 Pumpkin Festival theme. So I gave everybody upfront just a recap of our distinguished service award recipient, Jeff King, and then our Volunteer of the Year Award, Tim Mueller, and our Ambassador of the Year, Kelly Wagner. And just a lot of other really good highlights in here that we've also shared out publicly, really celebrating the meaning of this award and these awards, and again, just how blessed we are as a community of many with servant hearts, giving back to many people and organizations and projects throughout our community. And the 2023 Pumpkin Festival theme to celebrate our 57th Morton Pumpkin Festival will be Farmin' Pumpkins. So we're excited to celebrate the agriculture history of our Morton community and what that's meant since day one, all the exciting growth and opportunities within AgTech, and certainly the story behind our Libby's Nestle plant still producing 85% of the world's canned pumpkins. So thank you again. If you enjoyed that evening, thanks for being there and helping us really celebrate the award recipients. Just another quick save the date. Our Economic Development Council will be hosting our Symposium of Breakfast on March 22nd. Morton Buildings, their headquarters, will be hosting us in their training, onsite training facility for a great recap of last year, a little snapshot into 2023, and then a keynote from John Russell, the CEO at Morton Buildings. And lastly, I just wanted to kind of surface some recent conversations at the Morton Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council. Our mission for both organizations is to be out and connecting with our business community and connecting people and resources. So in a recent conversation with the Village, just said, "We're going to shift our I Shop Morton Committee," which is a lot of retailers, restaurants that will come together and have a discussion of upcoming projects, events, hometown holidays. It's kind of been a key project of that committee. To shift that to just more platform for open discussion and really opening up communication and opportunities to collaborate. One element that has surfaced is a discussion around the itinerant merchant license and maybe other elements to that. And with that, we thought it was important to surface that conversation because we have all seen this, after the pandemic, more and more of business development and economic development is moving this direction. Placemaking matters. Activity in your community matters. Businesses are starting with pop-up venues, pop-up trucks, pop-up elements, really trying to set pace to start their businesses. And more and more people want creative experiences to go and enjoy. So that's creating more and more of the demand and the desire to have placemaking, market events, and activities in unique spaces, unique places, and unique atmospheres. So with this, I think a lot of conversation has surfaced and a lot of dialogue is happening, and that's what I encourage. You know, as we look at this, we had this roundtable, and kind of the aha moment for me was, we had a lot of, "Well, what if?" And does this mean? And companies already in town are hosting a lot of these activities that could play into this, whether it's the existing itinerant merchant application and license, or maybe some modifications. I think surfacing this now, a lot of people, businesses are reading it, good, and there's a lot of questions. There's a lot of companies and businesses here in Morton that partner with each other, that collaborate with each other, that want to promote each other, that want to host each other. So that has been one question of, what does this mean for us that are co-hosting each other within the community? How could or would this potential itinerant merchant license apply to us? There's, you know, we started thinking about it. Floral Designs has hosted events in their parking lot. Blue Sky just had a open house trying to celebrate the changing of their name. They had a lot of Morton vendors there. You have Threads that's hosted Uncle Bud's. You, of course, have had So Chic Boutique with her events. You have 430 Scones that's had markets. You've had Eli's that have been at different businesses and have hosted different vendors in. Touch of Wellness has done outdoor activities. Muse, a business that does, hosts businesses in, in their outdoor space. Captivation Dance, Plank. We just kept going on and on of, would this itinerant merchant potentially apply to them? Just a question. And businesses want that information so they can comply. So I think there's just, I urge a lot more conversation and dialogue and insight from, from the businesses that are hosting these kind of activities, and more so the higher level of, this is where economic development is heading. This is the type of activities that spur those that want to live here. So hopefully, it can continue to be a very healthy, engaging process, and we can make sure that we hit it from all angles and that it becomes a very healthy kind of structure moving forward, encouraging those activities, and a very clear vision to the businesses of what they need to do to comply. So just hearing from businesses, you know, they rely on outside customers to support their businesses. And again, I think this is, a lot of communities can say that they have live, work, and play. These types of activities can only continue to set Morton apart of the inner workings of businesses collaborating with each other and hosting unique settings and unique experiences. So thank you for any conversations that have already taken place, and I just urge you to keep reaching out and getting informed and so we can make good decisions based on this one and keep those positive activities going strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? If you'd introduce yourself.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Sarah O'Shea, and I own So Chic Boutique in downtown Morton. I've owned a business in downtown Morton for 13 years and have been a resident here in Morton for the past 18. As you know, we host large-scale markets and events at our store and also utilize the Village Lot owned behind our store at the corner of Plum and Washington. We've hosted events at our business since we first opened 10 years ago and moved to the large-scale events utilizing the Village Lot in 2019, with each year reaching out to the Village to identify the process and provide information about the events. This year, on January 17th, I was told by the Village of two key changes being proposed that would directly impact our events, as well as many others. Changes that come on the heels of the many changes of use that were implemented over the last year, which we worked with in an effort to preserve the events and work within the modifications that were requested. There's now a proposed use fee of $1,000 per event for the use of the public lot. There previously not been a use fee in effect at all. The other modification being the itinerant merchant license, a license that vendors must obtain to participate in events. I was told initially that the language was being developed, was forthcoming, and would be voted on tonight, February 6th, and then communicated only through the Chamber and the EDC that the vote has been moved potentially to February 20th. As you know, I sent a lengthy letter to the Village Board and leadership on January 25th with my concerns and the impact of the proposals, impact that is far bigger than just our events alone, but on our community and on businesses as a whole. I was very clear that I understood the rationale for the proposals, but I urged additional conversation and clarity. Since then, I have received the sum total of two responses. One was a brief but encouraging email from Trustee Mennel saying that there was conversation happening. The other was an in-person visit from Trustee Hilliard, mostly with regard to the itinerant merchant license, informing me that the license was, in fact, not a proposal, as I'd first been told, but in fact, a policy that's been in place since 1994. When I asked why I was told it was a proposal being developed and was forthcoming, it was chalked up to a miscommunication. I then asked if this is in policy been in effect since 1994, why hadn't it been in effect for the events that we've been hosting since 2019 or over the past 10 years since we started? Unfortunately, there was no answer when I posed that question. At this point, the itinerant merchant license felt like a proverbial ace in the hole that could easily be thrown on the table to discourage our events from moving forward. It was an easy policy to disregard when the events were supported by the Village, but also an easy obstacle to be thrown in when it feels that the events no longer have their support. The problem with this particular ace in the hole is that it has a ripple effect on other events and collaborations happening in our community. Even the Chamber of Commerce, the organization meant to support businesses in our community, was unaware of the policy. The Chamber hosted a meeting last week of small business owners, and much of the conversation centered around the itinerant merchant license and the widespread impact it would have. I do wish that a representative from the Village Board or Village leadership would have been present to hear the confusion and frustration from the business owners who sat in the room, who have skin in the game, as to how this policy will be enforced moving forward. I believe the itinerant merchant license has room to be updated. I believe a single-use license should be considered. There should be more clarity on special event use and license exemptions. The application should certainly be more business-friendly, available online, and coming with additional information on what does and does not apply to the particular applicant. I've been participating in pop-up-style events for nearly 10 years, even having a mobile boutique truck for three years. Not once in any community that I took the truck or did a pop-up event where we asked to do an itinerant merchant fee or any equivalent thereof, because we were always an invited guest of a business or a part of a special event. Asking businesses to go through these extra expenses, extra steps, or navigate the confusion of the insurance aspect will discourage them from coming to our community. I was told our events, which happen four days out of the year, bring too many people to town, creating a parking problem. To that, I would say, "Good." We should be so lucky to have a temporary parking problem, because to have a temporary parking problem means that our town is being abundantly supported. It means it's vibrant. It means there is life. It means that there are people coming to our community. They're visiting local businesses. They're eating at local restaurants. They're getting gas at our gas stations. They're driving through our neighborhoods and possibly even envisioning what it might be to live in our community. Or at the very least, they're simply visiting Morton. Another discussion was that many of the businesses that come to our events are non-Morton businesses and that we want to keep support in our own town. To me, that is about the most short-sighted, non-business-friendly perspective and very disheartening to a business who thrives on having others come from outside communities to support it. So if we only want Morton businesses, do we only want Morton customers? As a Morton business, I rely on outsiders to support my business. I cannot support, I cannot rely on Morton customers alone. There is no bigger compliment than a customer coming from a neighboring community to support my business. What a compliment that they find there to be something in Morton for them. I urge further conversation to happen. I implore you to talk with and listen to businesses who care very deeply, not just about their businesses, but about their community. Communication needs to happen not just on this particular issue, but on many that have and are facing our community. Unfortunately, lack of communication and clarity between the leadership and the community seems to be a common theme and one that I think could be easily remedied. The fact that it's been nearly two weeks since I reached out with significant concerns and have only had two brief replies says three things to me. The issues are not worthy of a reply. My business is not worthy of a reply. Or I, as a business owner and a community member, am not worthy of a reply. Even if our events do not continue, whether it be by the Village's decision or my own, the issues on the table are much, much bigger than any one thing, and I'd be voicing my concerns regardless. As a business owner, I truly want to see our town thriving and being welcoming to other businesses and events. As a community member, I want our community being known as a town of meaning-making and door-opening. I will continue to make myself genuinely available for conversations on any of these topics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Janice Yoder. I am the owner of Adore Bridal and Specialty here in town. I come to you tonight without having had a full plan to speak, so apologize for anything that may not go in beautiful sentences as Sarah put together for us. But did feel an urge to, as, as I, in the last two weeks, the itinerant merchant issue has come up. One, I feel the urge to say to you guys, "I do not envy any of your jobs." Things like this, I mean, there's like 20 million different scenarios that have to be played out. And so how to look at a code that was written in 1994 and apply it to the way that businesses, business happens today, which is very different from 1994, is not an easy task. So number one, I just already appreciate that you're looking at it, that there appears that change needs to happen to the code and that you're taking that. So thank you for that. For me, as I became familiar with the code and read through it, the number one thing that I just want to make sure is on your guys' minds as you go through this, is that it is so much more than just the itinerant merchant. I look at the code and say, "Well, if we're going to follow one part of it, I want us to follow all of it." And whenever I read through what all of it means, it's so much more than an event that a business hosts. I, whenever I first heard about it, I didn't really think that it would, like, well, I don't host events like that, so it doesn't apply to me necessarily. But then, as I read it, I realize it does. It does in the way of the photographer that we have on retainer who comes into our store and takes pictures for us, and what would happen if she literally steps foot and we take pictures outside of Threads? Or, you know, at any other business, we've gone to Sucre. We, I mean, you're just literally stepping outside our door and taking an outside chat, that this code now, this code applies to them. It applies to the experience that we provide for our brides. We had a whole business plan actually for 2023 to host more things for our brides. Permanent jewelry, it's all the rage, and I don't know anything about it, but I guess it's cool. And we've had businesses approach us, "Hey, could we come do a jewelry night for your brides?" Well, now my answer needs to be "no" to something like that. So it does affect the experience level that I'm able to provide for my brides. And I understand some of the reasonings behind it and some of the protections, but I also think that there is just a lot more clarity that could be brought to different parts of the code or what you guys are proposing as changes to the code, to leave room for special use permits, for special event permits, for if it's within your walls, it's fine, if it's another Morton. I mean, there's just, like, there's 20 million different directions you can go, so I don't envy you. But that is also how my brain works, is I think of all those 20 million things. So there is that. On the flip side of it, as a business who... I, I have lived in Morton now for 16 years, and we very much consider this our home and love this community. But my business does not rely on Morton customers. If I did, I'm in the bridal business, I would not have a business. So I rely on, you know, 98% of my customers are coming from outside of Morton. And I want to promote what's in Morton to my customers that are coming in and saying, like, "Hey, here's a reason for you to stay for the day." "Hey, this thing is happening on the weekend that, or day, or evening, or whatever, that you're coming in for your appointment. You should check it out." "Or you should come early and you should go check this out." And so, like, I want to do those things. I love doing those things. And so, and I think it's great because it just draws more people to keep coming back to Morton. And if we take these things away, we, we take that away, then my customers become the customers that come for their two hours with me, and then they get in their cars and they leave town, versus I have opportunities that all of these customers, for my, you know, million-dollar bridal store each year, and who they, you know, bring 12 people with them and six people with them and 18 people. That's a terrible mistake, but they do it and they bring it with them. An opportunity for all of those people to go experience other things in Morton. And then, whenever they experience those things, they realize, "Oh, we're going to come back again, and we're going to come back again." And I hope that that doesn't go away. I don't want them to come to me for two hours and then leave town. So I just encourage you to think about all of the things, and just already, I'm sorry for having to do that, because it's a lot of things. I definitely would love the opportunity to speak with anyone who wants to about some of the things that I see and that, if it helps in any way, to bring things to light or to think, "Oh, I didn't think about that part of it. Oh, I didn't think about that part of it." I would be more than happy to have any of those conversations as well. But again, there's so many layers to this. I hope you keep peeling that onion back to hit every single one of those layers. Thank you for your time in considering all of those things, for realizing that, "Hey, this code is here, and it does need to be addressed," because it is there, so it needs to be addressed, because we don't want to just, like I said, we don't want to do only this part, but not this part. So I, I think it's good that it's being brought out. Now it's good to figure out how to make it be the best it can be, so that way Morton can, can continue to be the best it can be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting, January 16, 2023, and the approval of the bills. We could have a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Newman? Yes.
I have nothing tonight, Village Clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator.
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Chief of Police? Corporation Counsel.
One item tonight, Your Honor. I have a resolution proving a side letter agreement with our local paramedics union.
If we could have a motion?
Approve of Resolution 14-23. Second.
Yeah. The resolution extends, in accord previously reached with the paramedics, allowing the Village to continue its fully insured health insurance plan with some changes made to the per check employee contributions. It also extends terms of a prior side letter agreement reached regarding a 13th paramedic or a float medic position.
Any questions, concerns? If not, call the roll.
Newman?
Yes.
Mennel? Yes. Leach?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Director of Public Works?
Yeah, I got two items tonight, Your Honor. First in front of all of you is Item A. I'd like to waive formal bidding and ask for acceptance of proposal from Sam Lehman Morton for a new 2023 Dodge 3500 Crotec, four-wheel drive, for the Street Department in the amount of $53,936.
If we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, just briefly, this is actually a truck I got approval of about two years ago through another dealer in town. Unfortunately, with everything that's gone on in the last two years, we don't believe they're able to honor that. It was $15,000 cheaper, too. So we chose to work with Sam Lehman and hoping to get this approved tonight. We do, we, we did order the Pafco box, and it's been sitting at Pafco for almost two years, but it is in good shape and red and ready to be put on this truck. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Mennel?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is Item B. It's a resolution authorizing intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the Tri-County Multi-Jurisdictional Guardrail Improvement Project.
If we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
This is a project previously, was approved on a previous resolution to move forward with it, but we, 13 communities are part of this, and we did receive the $3 million grant. So this agreement would allow us to proceed to the next step. Tassell County will be the lead agency working with Tri-County. As far as the benefits of Morton, there's 34 locations and approximately 2,500 feet of guardrail. I put a map on it in front of you guys just to illustrate. It's pretty much every guardrail you see in town to bring it up to the latest standard, you know, for crash, crash tests and everything. So the next test, the next step would be to select a consultant. But as far as our benefit, we'd be paying a little over $18,000 and getting, you know, about $183,000 benefit. So this is a great project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Does it determine who's going to be doing the work?
Does it determine who's going to be doing the work for this?
No. So, the next step would be for an engineer to design everything for the 13 communities and, and the locations that have been predetermined and then it would go out for bid to select a contractor. So, you may not see construction, I mean, we wouldn't see it this year, the engineering would happen this year and hopefully subsequently next year, we'd see construction on that.
Any other questions? If not, call the roll.
Leach?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Mendel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Zoning and cove enforcement?
I have two items tonight, Your Honor. First item A is petition number 23-01, special use.
If we could have a motion? I move to approve.
So, this, this petition is requesting a zoning change from I-2 to I-2 with a special use to allow grid scale energy storage at the property identified by property identification number 06061930012. And for reference, this parcel is located to the south of West Birchwood Street on the west side of Flynn Avenue. So, in your packet, I did provide the minutes and transcripts from the January 23rd Plan Commission meeting and this petition was not given the favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. So, I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Go through, you have any questions? Quite a few info there, sorry. All right. We'll call the roll then.
Hilliard?
No.
Leach?
No.
Mendel?
No.
Newman?
No.
Motion fails.
All right. Second item tonight, Your Honor, is petition number 23-02, zoning amendment.
Motion to approve. Second.
Yes, this petition is requesting zoning change from I-2 to B-1 for two separate parcels. The first parcel is identified as 060620101002. The second parcel is the part of the property ID 0606201003, lying south of the Toledo, Toria, and Western Railway right-of-way. It's approximately 18.37 acres. And the minutes and transcripts from the January 23rd Plan Commission meeting were in your packets. This was given a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. Happy to answer any questions.
I miss a motion approved.
Motion not disabled.
You got a second? Okay. Any questions? Call the roll.
Leach?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Mendel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Village Trustees, any of you have anything tonight? If not, we do need a closed session.
Closed session is requested for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating matters between the Village and its employees or their representatives per five ILCS 120/2C2.
If we could have a motion, go into closed session.
Move to approve. Second.
Call the roll.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Mendel?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Motion carries.